Thank you. Good afternoon, I'd like to welcome everybody to the August 9th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And I don't see that we have anyone signed up to speak who's not an applicant today, but if you're interested in speaking to us and you're not the applicant, there are sheets, little sheets outside on the table outside the chambers, and if you would complete one of those and hand them to our secretary, we'd be happy to hear you on the case in which you have an interest. And I would also ask if you have cell phones, pagers, or any other sort of similar device, if you would silence those now, we would appreciate that. And the first order of business is approval of the July 12 minutes. No approval. Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes?
Yeah, I noticed one item on there, it was, I was not here last time, so I won't be voting, but it shows members present, it shows me as present, shows Commissioner Williams as absent, I believe that was reversed on the top part of the minutes. The body seems to be correct, but the top of it probably needs to be changed.
Okay, well, we'll take those amendments into the motion then. Motion is second, cast your votes, minutes are approved. And continuance requests, Susan?
Uncontested, sorry. Uncontested requests, there are several. We have 25, which is PUD 1466 to August 23rd, 26, which is C 6366 to August 23rd, 27, C 6356 to September 27th, 28, C 6374 to August 23rd, 29, PUD 1465 to September 13th, 30, C 6353 to September 13th, 31, which is PUD 1449 to October 25th, and 32, which is PC 10309 was withdrawn. And new requests?
Let's do this first.
Okay.
Is there anyone here today who came to talk to us about any of the continuances that were just read?
All the uncontested continuances.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the uncontested continuances, cast your votes, and they're approved.
Okay, new requests?
Yes.
17, PC 10313 to September 27th, 20 is C 6371 to August 23rd, 21 is C 6375 to August 23rd, and 22 is PC 10276 deferred to August 23rd.
September 13th, please.
And Chairman Yocel would like to defer that to September 13th.
Anyone here to talk to us today about any of those additional continuances just read?
No approval of the continuance request?
We have a motion and second to approve the additional continuances, cast your votes, please, and they're approved. Are there any requests from the public today for additional continuances?
Mr. Chairman, on item number 18, which is an application by Chesapeake to close a portion of 49th Street, we've been in contact with neighbors in the area, we've had the pleasure of meeting with Janice Powers, and talking about this case, if you all recall, when we came before you, we promised that we would do a two-step process. One, we would attempt to get the property on the corner of 50th and Western zoned, and that has been zoned, and our commitment was we'd come back and file for a closing application and a spud, which would provide for really in essence a downzoning of the C4 that exists. We have been working with the neighbors, and we anticipate filing our spud on Monday, and so we would like for this closing to be continued where both cases could be heard at the same time, and I think that would be September 13th.
And Commissioner Powers, that's agreeable?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Is there anyone here who's opposed to continuing item 18? Janice, you want to make a motion to continue it?
I'm going to continue.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to continue item 18 to September 13th, cast your votes. That's approved. Are there any other requests from the public for continuances today? If not, consent docket, Susan.
Okay, consent docket, there are six items, C 6365, C 6367, C 6369, PV 081, C 5846, and C 5952.
Anyone here today to talk to us about items 1 through 6 on the consent docket?
Miss?
I'll get it in a minute. Hearing none, no approval of the items on the consent docket.
I'd like one of those, Paul.
Which one?
The vacation of the common area, number four.
Okay, so why would you make a motion with the exception of number four? I agree with that, it's on the consent docket. Second, we have a motion and second to approve items 1 through 3, 5, and 6, cast your votes, and that's approved. Item 4 now, we'll hear that in order.
Okay, item 4 is PV 081, application by Storage Oklahoma LLC to vacate Common Area A and related notes in the final plat of gardens at Stone Meadows, located south of southwest 149th Street and east of Western Avenue and Ward 5.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Ford Drive, on behalf of the applicant, this is a case that Kendall Dillon is involved with, and I'm handling for him. This is an issue where we had a drainage facility that went east and west along the frontage, you can see the duplexes immediately to the east, that curves around south and then connects back to that street. A new owner has gone in and purchased the blank part where the drainage portion is, and what they've done, and what they'd like to do, is turn that drainage north and south. Currently, the drainage that was going east and west just acted as a trash trap, it was constantly being cleaned by other parties because it was actually owned by the community to the east, they don't want anything to do with it, it's fenced, so my client now owns that and wants to develop that corner, and this will facilitate that. I do have an exhibit that I have to show you. It shows what they're wanting to do. My client now owns it and will be maintaining it, so before you had a bad situation that just collected trash, and now you have someone that owns it that'll maintain it and develop that corner.
Okay, so you're not eliminating the drainage detention, you're relocating it?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's all I need.
Motion, Janice? Sorry, has this already been done?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 4, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you.
Before we go further, Mr. Janko?
Yes.
Did you hear that we have continued item 18 to September 13th?
I heard that, I'm very disappointed to hear, what's the name, what's the name of the gentleman that's?
Well, you need to come to a microphone if you're going to talk to us. If you would pull a microphone down and give us your name and address for the record?
Albert Janko, my address of record is 18, Box 18797, Oklahoma City, 73154-0797. I live in Nada 1 Northwest 49th Street.
Thank you.
And have since 1950, and I'm very disturbed to hear what that person said, and does he represent Chesapeake as an attorney or as an employee of the company?
He represents them as their counsel.
As their counsel, well, he said that he's been meeting with the neighbors to resolve some issues, and that's why they've asked for a postponement, you know, till September. And I know of at least two other neighbors besides myself that haven't had any conversation with Chesapeake or anybody that legally represents them.
Well, what will happen now, since it has been continued, is that Mr. Box will make sure that you're included when he meets with the neighborhood and any other people that you?
Well, the same statement was made here back in April when they were discussing the rezoning of the southeast corner of 50th and Western, and there are people that hadn't been brought into it either. Talking to one or two people in a neighborhood does not mean that they've got, you know, they've been trying to resolve an issue. I happen to have a letter, and I've already given it to Janice, and I'll give it to your other members, that I strongly support the recommendation of the staff report.
I understand, but since we're not going to take the case up today.
Okay.
I would ask that you give Mr. Box your contact information and that of any other people who are your neighbors who would be involved or impacted by this, and he'll be instructed to include you in those meetings. That's all we can do today.
And Mr. Chairman, I have given Mr. Janko my contact information so that we can make sure that loop goes full circle.
Okay.
Anything you might? Yes.
I'm trying to save you from having to sit through this whole meeting today.
Well, I plan to sit through it too, because as a person born in Oklahoma City and a lifetime resident and citizen of this city, I am concerned about the way that the population is being treated in the handling of these issues in a forthright and businesslike manner, and I don't think it's proper that when we spend hours trying to resolve these issues among ourselves and to find out how to do it, that we weren't notified that there'd be a continuance earlier today, so we wouldn't come down, and that's a major issue that the city council and these commissions ought to address, not wait until, you know, you start a meeting and then people have parked and done a lot of other things, had one person that, there's a number of other people that wanted to come that didn't.
We try and get those issues set ahead of time whenever we can, which is why we had a fairly lengthy continuance docket before these last items were brought up, but inevitably sometimes things do happen, and we're happy to have you stay through the meeting and watch the process.
So it's on the 13th of September?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Okay, Susan?
Item number 7 is SP 449, application by Crossings Community School for a special permit to operate a moderate impact institutional use, extension of school campus in the C3 Community Commercial District located at 14100 Wireless Way and Ward 8.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, Brian Coon representing Crossings Community School. I don't know if you've been out there toward to the campus, church has been there probably over 12 years, and they started constructing a school, started with kindergarten, they're all the way up to seniors now, and I think there may be three or four seniors, I'm not sure, but they're growing every year. We are under contract to purchase this property that is directly east of where the Dobson Communication used to be, it's now AT&amp;T, and our plan was, originally we had this come through with a special use permit for the whole school, and we started construction on the school, and it was approved back, I think in '02 maybe I think it was, but anyway, because this was a separate tract, the special use permit expired after one year if we had not started construction, but we started on the school, it's under construction, high school is in, elementary school is in, and they're continuing on. But anyway, this property is going to be almost entirely for athletic fields, and we had a rendering prepared, this is looking easterly at the property, of course, the street side will be, as you see on that drawing, will be the major part of the stadium with press box, opposite side will be just visitors' bleachers. This is all brick on this side, and we've met with the owners of the AT&amp;T building, we have agreements written with them and agreed to what the architectural will look like, we see that there should not be any conflicts with them. Again, on the staff report, there's two TEs, one of them talks about site lighting, will be in accordance with certain ordinances, we're A.A. okay with that, and we're also okay with the operation, limiting the hours of operation, but I would like to amend that, they said the staff recommended 8 to midnight, if you all have ever played football and know what 2-a-days mean, I'd like to see if we could maybe make hours of operation maybe 6 to midnight, just because early morning, get those kids out there as quick as possible, not have to wait till late, because it's already, what, 95, 8 o'clock, so, again, at 6:00 in the morning, there's going to be 20 kids maybe, and like I said, it's a very small school right now, so I don't see a lot of activity, it shouldn't hurt any of the operations of the businesses, so I'd like to amend that to have that be 6 to midnight.
Just an observation or comment, I've heard from some of the neighbors that those streets are marked for no parking at any time.
Okay.
But cars park there all the time, as I'm told by businesses who are in that area, at least whenever there are activities on these fields.
Those fields, okay, those fields are actually further north where we currently have a football field, or current one is, this one will provide more parking directly across the street, so, again, we've talked to the neighbors, and I know, I think I know which neighbor you're talking about that is directly south of the school right now, and some kids park on that street, so we will make sure they're continued.
So you'll be using AT&amp;T's lot partially, or you'll have your own lot across the street?
We have our own lot, we have over 1,000 car parking lot now, existing, so we have plenty of parking.
Okay, well, I would just ask that you not have folks parking on the streets?
I agree, yep.
Any other discussion, Commissioners?
New approval, application amending TE 2 from 6 a.m. from 8 a.m.
Second, we have a motion and second to approve item 7 as condition, cast your votes, and that's approved.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Item number 8, PC 10307, application by Zerbi Interests to rezone 12930 Northwest 10th Street from the AA Agricultural District to the C3 Community Commercial District in Ward 3.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant, we would ask that you consider rezoning this property as we've requested, which is straight C3 commercial. Sue Minton has just handed out an aerial map which reflects the intensity of uses not only to the north of this site, but also to the west of this site, and this is a 1.59 acre site, and my clients have a contract to purchase it and have an intended user, which would be a C store that will have gasoline pumps also. We believe it's appropriate zoning, and we're here to answer any questions, it's not very often I get to stand in front of you and not only agree with the staff, but agree with their comments about no unfavorable considerations, so on this one.
You don't agree with no unfavorable considerations?
I do agree, yes.
Oh, okay.
It's not very often that we can agree on the last page.
I'll ask Commissioner Bright's question for you, what are you going to do about signage there? What will you do about signage on that site? I mean, I know you can do quite a bit with the C3 site.
Yeah, I'm, okay, you want to? And then you'll need to come over here to talk into the microphone.
My name's Caleb Hill with Zerbi Interests, we're located at 7725 West Reno. The sign there that I'm passing along is an example of a sign we've used and that are intent to use, which is about 25 feet tall.
Could I make an observation, Mr. Chairman, about the application? I mentioned it last time, this came up last meeting, is that my preference would be that this be presented as a SPUD, period, because what you're doing is you're allowing every single C3 use, no architectural or materials standards whatsoever, and even though you say that there's going to be a 25-foot sign, you have the authority under a C3, I think, to put a 50-foot pole sign up.
Forty, anyway.
And in the staff report, and this is where I'm really, really curious, you know, commercial staff says approved application, yet it says in the Southwest Sector Development Policy section of this staff report, Southwest Sector Plan, of all the work that the committees did on that plan, they want to have something that enhances community appearance, scale to serve the needs of residents in addition areas, parking lot designs that contribute to the attractiveness of the area, pole signs should be prohibited, in other words, the Southwest Sector Plan, the committees that worked very hard to establish what they want, you come in with straight C3 zoning, and I think that that's a mistake, I think it's been a mistake for years and years and years, even though you're showing that, you're showing a 25-foot sign that has flashing lights on it, I'm not sure that anybody really would like to have that in their neighborhood, even though across the street in Yukon or wherever it is, with no controls, they do, but that's my objection, and I can't support this without coming in with a PUD and showing me what it is you're going to put this thing, how it's going to be, how the parking's going to be, what's the landscaping going to be, what materials you're going to use for the building, signage, et cetera, that's my position on this, and it was when it came up last time, I think we need to know what it is you're going to do.
And I appreciate your position, and I just would respond by saying, when you look at the intensity of uses to the north and the straight C3 adjacent to this property, and the staff's review, which is supportive, I can't imagine if this case is not appropriate for straight commercial zoning, that there is a case in Oklahoma City that would be appropriate for straight zoning. So, unless...
I'm just looking at Buck to see if he's got something he wants to say, you don't have to, I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot.
No, I share Bob's concerns, but I also would probably agree with Dennis in this case, this is a very commercialized area, and, you know, it's surrounded by C3 zoning already, there's no residential really impacted by the corner or what goes on there, but I still share the same concerns that, you know, we have no controls over what goes in there, how it looks, how it's designed, and I'm torn by that.
Dennis, I don't have a problem with it being C3 either, I mean, I think that's appropriate, given, A, where it is and what surrounds it, I think you could do something to make a more attractive sign and something that reflects the building, materials, whatever they're going to be, but two poles and this sign, I mean, you can do it, and you're going to, if you get approval, you can do whatever you want, I would just ask for something...
I would agree, Dennis, because if you look across the street in Yukon, there's no, there's none of this, okay? There's nothing that looks like this.
No, we can improve on that, we can put a base to that sign, you know, a CMU block, that's what the building will be constructed out of, you know, OnQ typically does a base on their signs as well, and I think we could do something similar to that.
You could even make this a fairly, I mean, it's tall, but it could be of monuments style design or something like that, they would just make it more attractive than two poles coming out of a base and then something on top.
Sure.
Just a thought.
No, absolutely, the area, Ford dealership has a 50-foot single pole.
Oh, we know, and it's...
And we don't like it either.
Yeah, I think it'll be consistent.
What I just heard my client say was, he would go back and try to improve on the visual character of the sign, and these gentlemen have been developing in the city for a long time, so they understand the consequences if they don't do the right thing.
I've seen some of their other locations, and I think they do a good job.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Sergeant.
Jim?
Well, I'm a little bit appalled, and I agree, that we need to know how things look, how it's plotted, things like that, but I think there's an appropriate place for that, and I don't think we want to get away from traditional zoning.
Yeah.
I think there's a need for traditional zoning, and in this particular case, I think it fits like a glove, and, you know, I think when you get away from traditional zoning, and we've got, we've got things that limit what they can be made out of, we've got things that govern how it's built, and so on and so forth, and from what we've seen from these folks and from OnQ and places like that, when they spend the kind of money they spend on their sites and their buildings, you know, I'm very proud of what OnQ and these folks have done over the city, and, you know, I'm just, I don't want to get away from traditional zoning, and I think this is a place that we need traditional zoning, and that's my stand.
Any other discussion? Nick?
I too share the general philosophy that I like to have control and see what's going to be there, but if you look at this site, as Buck pointed out, I don't know that there is a more appropriate site for straight zoning, and, you know, if we go the route of saying, fine, we don't want straight C3 zoning here, I'll go back to the question Box asked, then would...
In the city, would you ever do it?
And if, if we don't, and we may not want straight C3 zoning, but if we don't, then I believe we need to address the bigger problem and go back and change things and say, okay, folks, there will be no more straight zoning, because straight zoning is not appropriate anywhere in this city, so all new applications come to us in the form of a PUD or an SPUD. I looked at this three different ways, and for the life of me, I cannot figure out why it shouldn't be straight C3 zoning.
Let me add a question to this discussion, I don't disagree, but when you have, this is why I quoted the segment in the staff report about the Southwest Sector Plan, it says clearly, they would really prefer no pole signs, you've got a 25-foot pole sign in front of you, you know, they prefer...
Bob, I would prefer it to be 20 degrees cooler outside.
(laughing).
But it's not, you know...
But I think that's...
Again, if this application was sitting down here in the middle of town, I'd say no, it's not, it's not appropriate for C3 zoning, put it in SPUD.
But when it's out there...
But where it is, like I said, tell me a more appropriate site for straight zoning. If there are no appropriate sites in our 620-some-odd square miles of city, then let's belly up to the bar and say so, and say all applications need to come in the form of a PUD with all sorts of design requirements, and, you know, say what we mean if that's what we mean. I don't think that's what we mean, that's certainly not what I'm going for, and that's not, I don't believe that's what Commissioner Allen was suggesting, but what is more appropriate than this site?
Well, and if we make the case that one of the things we ought to be considering is the built environment, the context where things are proposed, applications are proposed, you look at this location, and you've got a cold supermarket on one corner, a Ford dealer on the other, straight C3 on the other, and this C3 is going to fit into that environment.
Could I make just one other comment about?
Sure.
Straight zoning, I would be in complete agreement on just one issue, I mean, except for one issue, and I've said this now for years, if ever we would adopt a reasonable sign policy.
Yes.
That affects the C3 zoning, if the city council would come in and say, wait a minute, what are we doing, I wouldn't have this discussion today.
Right.
I mean, that's really the issue.
That is the issue, I mean, it's not necessarily the uses, what we stick on historically on this commission, time after time after time, and what we spend a lot of our time with, with developers, is purely signs. Generally, the uses come reasonably to us, but we always come to the end and we're negotiating over two poles, one pole, landscape based, non-landscape based, how tall is it, there's no other signs in the area, it's a colossal waste of time for everybody, for the developers, for us, there's no clear guidance, in my view, with respect to what we want or we view for signs.
There's no clear guidance, in my view, with respect to what we want or we view for signs in, in general. I think that's, for me, this, I'm fine with the application. I agree with everybody. I think straight zoning is very important, but as a policy statement, it begs the issue about signs, and so that's all I got.
Okay. Well, I think we have a consensus, so let's take action.
So based on the fact that the applicants guarantee me we're not going to have a pole sign, I'll move for approval.
Second. Gave a motion and second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Number eight, sorry, what did I just do?
Okay, item nine is SPUD 675, application by Riverport Park LTD to rezone 1601 South Portland Avenue from the PUD 1417 and SRODD districts to the SPUD 675 Simplified Plan Unit Development District Ward 3.
You're back. Hello, I'm back. Steve Landys with Land Run Group, or Land Run Engineering as well, and representing the owner on this, on behalf, representing on behalf of the owner. I think two weeks ago, when we talked last, we had provided the S-PUD, but y'all were wanting to see a little bit of an elevation, a picture of what was going on. I kind of have to say, I agree with you, and I appreciated it for no other reason than it helped me kind of rein in the property owner and figure out what we were wanting, you know, make sure everything is exactly like we were talking about. Kind of came up to get with a conceptual layout that I hope kind of meets a little bit of an idea of what they were wanting and what we were looking for. Of course, once again, I want to bring up that this was conceptual. It's pretty close, but, you know, there may be some minor changes, and really, that seemed pretty minor. And other than that, we have met with Scotty with the SRODD, and then I also spoke quite a bit with Stuart Chee regarding the driveway issues, which were all of the, really, two primary TEs that y'all had some major concerns with, and then I as well tried to come ahead and put together a little bit of an elevations, a little bit of rendering to kind of give you a general picture of what we're looking for.
Do you agree with the technical evaluation? Have you seen the staff report, and do you agree with the technical evaluation?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Any other question?
Moving right along.
I'm moving approval.
Does that mean everything y'all were looking for?
Are you sure?
I tried to get everything y'all were looking for. Hopefully, it works great.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you. Thank you for working with us.
Hey, I appreciate it.
Item 10 is C6361, final plat of Griffin Park III, being a part of the northeast quarter of Section 32 Township 14 North, range 3 West of the Indian Meridian, located west of Western Avenue and south of Northwest 178th Street in Ward 8, and applicant is asking for variance to TE number three.
Keith Beatty with Ish and Associates. Now, the plat for you is just a continuation of Griffin Park Edition. This will actually be our final phase of it. We would like to request the variance indicated in TE number three and agree to meet all the other TEs, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Now, we didn't have the TE in the preliminary, did we?
No, we had planned on making that connection, but there is an elevation issue with the drainage that's in that area that keeps us from making that connection.
Okay.
My only question is, is on the emergency exit, it goes through a common area?
Yes, sir.
At least the way I read it on the map. Is that okay with the fire department, I mean, to get in and out of that?
Yes, sir. And we're actually going to, right now, with the second phase, we had gravelled it, expecting to put the road in in the future. We're actually going to go back and asphalt pave that emergency access.
So there'd be a hard surface between, so they can get in and out of that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, we have a variance to TE number three.
Mr. Chairman, I have one comment, and then I'll move the variance, but asphalt's fine, but before you do that, explore those grass pavers that the fire department has approved and work with them, because I think it works just as well or better than asphalt and holds up better and looks better.
Okay.
With that, I'd move the variance to E3.
Second.
I just want to be clear, I understand what we're varying here. Are we not going to make the connection that shows here as 176th Street? Is that it?
Right.
And it's because of a difference in elevation, you're saying?
No, it's the one at the south. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, okay.
It's going through the commons area?
Yeah, the connection to the Fenwick is going to just be the emergency access, and it'll be through a common area, addited to the HOA.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion and second to approve the variance. Cast your votes. It's approved. We approve the application. Second. We have a motion and second to approve item 10. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11 is PC 10311, application by Leonard Sullivan to rezone 7800 North I-35 Service Road from the AA Agricultural District and C3 Community Commercial District to the I-2 Moderate Industrial District, and it's in Ward 7.
Mr. Chairman, Dennis Box, and I didn't say I agreed with the staff on every case.
Oh, you want to disagree on this one?
Yes. This is a case, and Mr. Sullivan is here. Couple of things that I think need to be pointed out for the commission. Number one, Mr. Sullivan in 1999 filed for a rezoning application for I-2, and the Planning Commission and City Council turned him down. He ended up going to district court, and prior to there being a trial, the district court actually granted relief to Mr. Sullivan, and the property in question is zoned I-1 and allows for a single billboard. And Mr. Sullivan would tell you that the biggest mistake he made was agreeing to the settlement on the one billboard. He should have provided for two, which we are now back asking for I-2 zoning on the little notch that you see. The staff, so the zoning is reflected in the staff report is not accurate. It's actually I-1, allowing for one billboard on the area to the south. The map that Mrs. Minton handed out will provide an accurate reflection of what you see on the east side of the highway and south of Wilshire. And when you look at it, what I call Grove's Corner, which is where all the vehicles are, because Eric represented the applicant that came before you all several years ago, is a true reflection of what the actual land use is south of Mr. Sullivan's site. The mark that is made on there is the area that we're asking to be rezoned, and earlier today, I had the opportunity to talk to the lady that has the landscape company, and she's indicated, as of today, she is in opposition to our application, but was more than willing to work with us between Planning Commission and Council, and I told her that we would work with her in regard to where the billboard would be placed, and her concern was that she didn't want to be in a situation where if a billboard was placed on our property, it would negatively impact the ability of the traveling public to see her business, which is a very nice landscape business. So I'll be coordinating with her between this hearing and the city council. Mr. Sullivan is here, if you all have any questions, but as indicated, we have been down the road once, and we are hopeful that when you look at the aerial that is provided that is on Google, it will give you a good indication of why we don't think a single billboard will have any negative consequences for this area.
Dennis, you confuse me a little bit. Can we go back in your presentation? You said back in time, there was the ability to put two billboards on this tract?
No.
Where's the other tract that you said that you could have a billboard, but you gave up the right to one, but not the other? Did I understand that?
Yeah. Let me, let me give you a better picture.
We're going to talk about your cell phone, Leonard.
Okay, this is, this is a better way to describe it. This is the subject site that was part of the 2000, and I'll hand this out, but the 2000 case that went over to the district court and the judge approved I-1 zoning and a billboard. And what we've done is come in here and now just ask that this little notch right here be approved for I-2, and we have nothing to hide. We anticipate putting a billboard on that site, which I-2 would allow, but that's the site.
Now, is there a billboard somewhere further south on that larger site now?
A little over 1,200 feet.
Okay, so the answer is you've got one down on the south end of that site?
You already have the one that the court allowed.
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That is correct.
And so now, the entire tract, if I understand what you said, has been rezoned I-1 by the court, which allows for one billboard, and you need I-2 zoning on the little nodule, as you put it, up north to get the second billboard on this site?
That is accurate. Yes.
So it is not C3 and AA, as the staff report suggests? As you said earlier, that's not correct. It's all I-1.
That is correct. And it was a, it was a general entry that was a settled case between the city attorney's office and Mr. Kelly Work, representing Mr. Sullivan.
So that general entry was by agreement between the city and Mr. Sullivan?
That is correct. There was not, there was not a trial, because the proposal was for I-2, and there was compromise on both sides, which usually takes place if a settlement in a land use matter happens.
And you're just saying Mr. Sullivan didn't realize he was giving up a second billboard site?
Well, I'm going to let him speak for himself on that, but I think he realizes the consequences now and believes that when you look at the existing conditions, this is a perfect site.
Leonard, give us your name and address for the record.
I'm Leonard Sullivan, owner of the property. I had to make a fast decision.
Your address, your address.
12632 Valverde Drive, Oklahoma City, 712. I had to make a fast decision on this. We were in court for several months, which obviously was a slam dunk on, you know, getting it zoned. In fact, when I bought it, the county assessor had made a bad mistake. They had on their records, it's industrial property, it's always, it's assumed that was correct. After I bought it, they found out it was agriculture, it had never been zoned. So applied for the zoning, and it was obviously going to be a slam dunk, because it's industrial zoning on all four sides of it. But they called me on the phone the day we were going to go to court and said, hey, we're giving up, we'll roll over, we'll give you a zoning, but would you agree just for one billboard? And on the telephone, I had to make a quick decision, and I said, yes, I'd take one billboard. If I just hung in and gone to court, I'd have got both of them at the time.
Okay. That answers my question about the history and what happened.
Yeah, and since 2000, I think it's, the reason I handed out the aerial, I think it reflects this area. Now, as indicated, the lady that is working, and her name is Mrs. Pritchett, and she owns the landscaping company behind, very nice person, told her I'd work with her between Planning Commission and Council. Her official position is she's opposed to it, but she's more willing to work with us. Her concern was she didn't want there to be something that would prevent vehicles from seeing her landscape company, which is a very nice operation, so.
I think the staff report conclusion is probably predicated on not just the Planning Commission, but the city council's desire not to have more billboards. So, I mean, that's been the history of our activity, is to minimize the number of billboards, eliminate them wherever we can, and certainly, the council is not looking for more billboards, particularly along appearance corridors. So I leave it open for discussion, commissioners.
Well, Mr. Chairman, first, I agree with the recommendation of the staff, because as far as we've been trying to improve the appearance in our appearance corridors, and they have one billboard, site is very visible of the activity, and I have to stick with the recommendations of the staff, is not approve another billboard to be put in that location.
Other discussion? Commissioners?
Do you assume what kind of billboard this is going to be? Is it going to be an LED? Is it going to be traditional? Do you even know?
We do not know.
Do you know what the height of that billboard would be?
No, sir.
So you're just, it's just speculative, really?
Mr. Sullivan is a businessman, in addition to his other responsibilities and public service, thinks that billboards are not near the evil thing that some people think, and think that this is based on what's around this property, this is the highest and best use for it and would be appropriate. So it'll be one of those situations where if we're successful, then he'll get somebody to do a survey, analyze it, and look at what's appropriate, and then he'll work with the neighbor that owns the landscaping company to make sure he doesn't negatively impact her.
You know, I'm really not a sign advocate, but being in the real estate business, probably 85% of sales come from signs, and, you know, just a question, are we limiting, are we going to limit income by limiting billboards? I don't know. Billboards generate income, they generate taxes, and like I say, I'm not a billboard advocate, but are we shooting ourselves in the foot by limiting some of these things? I don't know. You know, just a question.
From our standpoint, that's a very good question, and I think there's no question that the city has certain areas that really are an appearance corridor, and they want to make sure that it stays in a pristine view and fashion, but I don't think anybody can look at this aerial and say with a straight face that putting a billboard at this location would have a huge negative impact on the city. I mean, based on what's to the south of this property, we think a billboard would provide for some economic development.
This is my observation, is that I think that, I mean, just to cut to the chase, that I think honoring the negotiated settlement that was entered into between the city and your client, providing that this land be rezoned I-1, and the agreement was at one billboard, I think we need to honor that, and I move to deny the application.
Second. Is there any additional discussion, commissioners?
Well, I would just make one additional comment in line of what Mr. Allen said. I don't like billboards. You know I'm not a billboard advocate. We made a bad mistake on this site once, when we allowed that, what I call a junkyard, they don't call it a junkyard, but it is, and if we're ever going to approve a billboard, this may be the place, just because of that. Gosh, we shot ourselves in the foot on that other application, and I'm not sure this would make, or could make it any worse.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for denial. A vote for is to deny. Cast your votes, and it is denied. Thank you all.
Headed number 12, SPUD 670, application by Don Hayes to rezone 4141 Northwestern Avenue from the O2 General Office District to SPUD 670, Simplified Plan Unit Development, Unit Development District in Ward 2, and there are two protest letters.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Callford Drive, here on...
Here on behalf of the applicant, also with me is Mr. Don Hayes, who is the building owner. Our application today is for SPOD 670. It was before this commission, several weeks ago, and we've moved to continue the item to address several concerns that the staff had raised. Since that time, we have amended the SPOD. We have taken out a significant amount of uses. We have further limited any of the eating establishment uses listed in the SPOD to only be 1,300 square feet, and I'll let Mr. Hayes get up in a moment and explain why, and explain what his ideas are for this property. But we also committed to coming back for a specific plan, if and when the current building ever goes away. That was one of the issues that the staff had, was that there weren't enough architectural controls. So we felt like committing to a specific plan, if the current building goes away, would be something that would be appropriate and would ease some of those concerns. Now, one thing that, that is important about this application, and you all just received a, a handout that was also provided to staff, this property that my client owns is in the Western Avenue Business District. Now, because of that, he is subject to a tax every single year. His tax money goes to supporting the Western Avenue Business District. And as you'll note, when you look at this, some of the things that his tax money goes to promote are restaurants, antiques, furniture, health, beauty, shopping, services, art galleries, corporate and nonprofit. We feel that what we've done in this SPOD application is consistent with that, it's consistent with what Mr. Hayes's tax money is going towards. I inquired with the city today whether or not he can opt out of this, because currently his property can't be used for these things. And they said, no, he can't opt out. The residential structures along Western aren't subject to this bid tax, but he is. And as such, we feel that it's appropriate that he be able to make the uses that his tax money is going to support.
David, can I interrupt you for a minute?
Yes, sir.
The structure that's there now is residential in design, is that right?
In design, yes.
Okay. How is it being used today?
Office. It's zoned O-2, and I've...
Give me your name and address for the record, please.
Don Hayes, lifetime resident of Oklahoma City, 4141 Northwestern, of course, real estate. I, I just want to try to take advantage of the district that I'm in, and try to possibly put in something like a coffee shop, or a bakery, or something that goes hand in hand with the area, from gallery to salon. I'm a one-man operation. I've been using that as an office, and I'd like to expand that.
So you are using it now as your office?
Yes, I'm using it as an office. It's, I don't need, I'm just, you know, one man, and 1,300 feet on Western Avenue, right there at that location. That district seems to be very successful with the impact that, it is very successful with the impact that Chesapeake has done, you know, a mile north of there, and I would just like to utilize that, so.
Just one question, how long have you been officing there?
Six years.
Was it a residence before that?
No, it was home instead. It was a health company, people that managed people. I actually traded that property for some property that Chesapeake wanted to buy, so they could expand their facility to the, to the east. And I had some friends occupy there for a couple of years, Ariel, Oklahoma. I know the city, business with them. And it's just gotten to the point where I need to do something that's more commercial. I don't have, you know, my trade of business isn't a walk-in trade, it's more, you know, hands-on work on solicitation, that sort of thing. So I did remodel it, and I think it would be, I've had a number of people approach me for a salon, a coffee shop, and bakery, and I thought it'd be nice if I could fix the place up, and, and it's not a negative, none of the uses that I've asked for are a negative impact. I like that native consequence to the neighborhood, I like that term, Dennis, just a minute ago. It falls hand in hand, goes hand in hand with the immediate neighbors, and goes, I don't, I've had my neighbors talk to me that are, that would be in jeopardy for any kind of major success that it would have, and they haven't indicated to me that they would object to it. So I'm just asking for, you know, a little bit of diversification here, so.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Sure, go ahead.
With the ongoing, you know, along Western, and we had this in our last meeting, there's been a lot of problem with enough parking in the area. And, and the uses I see that you have here, that you, you're asking for, they seem would really impact that parking problem, and the site don't reflect, it don't seem to reflect enough space for parking, one. And then, then a comment is, if you know a specific use, why don't you just zone it just for that specific use? Those are my two concerns.
And those are great points. We don't have a specific use. Mr. Hayes has had a lot of interest from various parties. Some were coffee shops, some were bakeries. So what we attempted to do with this SPOD is allow for the, the types of uses that would be appropriate for this area, recognizing that directly north of us is straight C-4, very intense. We stripped out lots and lots of uses, and we, we tried to get to a point to where what we allowed would work with the size of building. There are two parking spaces, there's a parking, or parking structure, there's a parking facility just to the south, and there's a gravel parking in front, and Mr. Hayes has agreed to, he's removing the gravel, he's going to pave that. So we feel that with that, we think that the parking won't be a problem. If you'll notice, the restaurants, we've limited those to 1,300 square feet. Part of that reason is because it's a very small building, and there is parking issues. So with that, the type of restaurant that you're going to have in 1,300 square feet is not going to promote the type of parking problems that many businesses along Western do, do provide. This isn't going to be a bar, it's not going to be a tavern, that's not his goal, he doesn't want that. What he does want is to be able to promote his, his space with what's consistent in the area. And what's consistent in the area are what his tax dollars go to, to fund. And he thinks it's appropriate that if his tax dollars are going to fund all these commercial activities, that he be, enjoy the same ability that others are. There is a, a comment in the staff report that south of 41st is residential and churches, and I would agree that immediately south is, but when you go further south to 36th, you have a heavy commercial, and that's all part of the same corridor. So while south of 41st, there are some residential and churches, it's only for a couple blocks, and you get back into the straight commercial zoning. We would submit that the neighborhood around there is, is thriving right now, despite all of the heavy C-4. Our application is, is much less intense than what's already there, and we think it will have no negative impact on the neighborhood and the neighbors, and we would ask for, for your approval.
David, tell me about the parking immediately south. Is that something your client owns?
Yes, sir. You can see it on the, on the site plan.
So he owns down to the alley, in other words?
Yes, sir.
That's my question.
And then there's parking in the front as well?
Yeah, we'll make sure that there's parking codes already, whatever.
And directly across the street to the east, those two structures are residences?
To the east?
Directly across the street to the east?
Yes.
And the footprint of the building itself is 1,300 square feet?
Yes, sir.
So if you had a restaurant, you'd obviously have to have a food prep area, kitchen, clearly, restrooms, whatever else goes into a restaurant. So you're going to have a pretty small footprint for...
Correct.
Where you would actually be serving food, right?
And that, that was our goal, is that we, we don't want a full-scale restaurant like you see on Western. One of the ideas that has been proposed to Mr. Hayes has been a, a unique concept to where you would have a small, I guess you'd call it a restaurant, but three or four tables, to where you would have a chef that would prepare a meal for one couple, or just a couple couples, and be able to serve some wine. But, Mr. Chairman, you're absolutely correct, and that's why we did it. With a small footprint in the building, with the equipment and everything you'd have to do for code to operate a restaurant, that small footprint would not lend itself to the type of intense traffic problems and parking problems that a lot of restaurants on Western face.
It would be a pretty difficult restaurant to make a profit in, too, wouldn't it, with something that small?
I would agree. And that's why I think it would be limited to a special, unique type of, of use.
Well, how many parking spaces are there on that south lot?
Looks like six or seven.
Just as a question for us, the last little place that we approved, when I counted up the tops in there, it was just down the street, closer to the SIP, was small. I just don't recall how big that was, but by the time you count up the tops, it was a fairly, it surprised me how many people could be in there at any one particular I, I don't know, I'm, the small quote restaurants, I, I remember the gelato stand, that is now the wedge, which seats with an outdoor dining area, and that was going to be just a small, when it began with us, it was just a small idea for a small boutique, gelato slash coffee place, and now it seats 60, with a big lot that fronts onto Western. Once again, the attendant, traffic and parking problems that attend back to the east for the neighborhood, so I'm leery personally of this type operation. Not, no offense to you, Mr. Hayes, but...
They already have parking, yes, sir, for that particular deal.
Yeah, Mr. Hensley, if I could address that one, I think that the difference there is that SPOD specifically does not require parking. We'll have to meet all code requirements when it comes to parking, so there you have a situation where the, the one next to the SIP, they, they don't have to have parking, and that was a big discussion. So we have to have parking, and we'll meet the code requirements. And if we ever do anything other than a 1,300 square foot footprint, we'll have to come back for a specific plan.
Mr. Chairman.
I was waiting for you, Janice.
And, well, I wanted to make sure that all the commissioners had their opportunity to ask what were questions they had of the applicant. I met with Mr. Hayes, and we talked at some length about his vision for the development of this property, but I have to say that I was then and remain adamantly opposed to this rezoning. I think that 41st Street represents a pretty bright line, south of which I don't think that the development, the commercial development along Western should extend. The property from there to 36th is residential in nature, yes, there are some churches and church parking lots along there, and yes, there is a commercial node at the corner of 36th. And it is intensely zoned, as we have discussed before, because it is ancient zoning, it reaches back to the dawn of time, but it is saved from being a bigger problem than it would otherwise be by the fact that it is small, it is limited, and I do not feel any need whatsoever to extend it. This property is zoned O-2. A number of the uses that Mr. Hayes indicated he wanted to make of the property are uses that he could make of the property today. It could be an art gallery today. It could be medical services today. It has been a business, it is a business. It has a front yard that's been gravelled, as I understand it, illegally, to provide parking. I'm not inclined to see that made worse by pavement. I really just do not think that there is any reason whatsoever to extend the commercial development of Western South in a way that's going, is going to negatively impact and will almost certainly threaten the residential development on both the east and the west sides of Western, and that is residential development that has struggled mightily to hold on to its value and preserve itself, and come back, and to provide a really comfortable, you know, one of Oklahoma City's first suburbs, if you will. And it has made the development of Western possible, but I do not want to see the tail start wagging the dog along Western. I don't want to see it expanded, I don't want to see it enlarged, I don't want to see it stretch out to the south. And I, I think that would be a terrible thing for this area. I've spoken to a lot of my neighbors about this as well. We have a couple of letters here from people who live nearby, neighbors, neighborhood association. The Helm Farm Neighborhood Association is struggling mightily to get itself reestablished and to protect itself from the encroachment of the uses along Western. Everybody wants to see Western do well. I think everybody wants, likes the idea of it being there, but the support for that is limited to the kind of unique, small-scale, period building development that already exists along Western. I think this O-2 zoning provides an ideal buffer, and that it is more than sufficient, and I am opposed to this application and would move to deny it.
Question about the 36th Street node, that just goes up one block, doesn't it?
Yes.
To 37th and stops.
Yes.
I mean, it's, it's just the corner.
Yes.
On both the east and west sides.
Yes.
Yeah.
I respectfully disagree with her opinion, and I, I do take offense to the term illegal. The building department told me that I could gravel, but I could not park on it. I do not park on it. It is my intent to further develop this property, you know, landscaping and additional parking. The uses that I've asked for are hand in hand with the same type of parking issues you'd have with a successful office. So I'm, and, and as far as a demarcation of where C-3, C-4, O-2 begins and begin, I'm the only O-2 from 36th all the way to the interstate, there is an O-2 that is out of compliance that's north of me. It's been commercial for 15 years. I'm, I'm just asking for the opportunity to expand the horizon and further embellish this location. So I'd appreciate it if you would, I know that, I mean, I know what the consequences are, but I, I would ask for your support. That's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nick?
Mr. Chairman, this is a Yogi Bear for me, deja vu all over again. Every time we get an application on here, we hear this hysteria, paranoia about if this application is approved, the whole neighborhood's going to implode. For you that were around 10 years ago, there's a beauty salon catty-cornered from this. When we heard that, I, it was, the world was going to come to an end, and then town heights is absolutely gone if we approve that. Well, we did approve it. There's been no adverse effect. I think it's ironic, we're going to deny this application, I think the handwriting's on the wall, but I think it's ironic that we've approved other ones up here that didn't have this space. Here we have a half a block of space with a 1,300-foot structure on it, and we're picking it apart. The applicant made an application, we suggested they go back and make changes, they did. I don't think he has any high-intense uses here. We either need to give him relief and change the stupid business district, or at least let him run it as a business. I think it's ironic that he's paying bid tax on something that he can't use. We speak the forked tongue.
All I have to say. Any other discussion?
I want to second, Janice, but with an additional comment, and that is, it's a, it's a global issue, and I've read letters from protesters, the parking issues, the violation of parking, the valet parking going from one place to another, that, that by approval of, I mean, you mentioned where the wedge is, you know, I mean, we, we thought it was a gelato place, and now it's, you know, it's outdoor dining, a lot of people, valet parking is being parked in other people's lots, et cetera. It's getting your arms around a very viable commercial entertainment... It's getting your arms around a very viable commercial entertainment area that's smashed in between a wonderful residential area and another on both the east and the west side, and here it is. I mean, my own experience, the only experience I had with areas like that is in New Orleans. You've got these bars and clubs, et cetera, and people park all over the neighborhoods wherever you can park, because there's no parking. Everything's smashed in. That's not consistent with what we in Oklahoma deal with. We've got our cars, and we're not going to carpool. We're going to want to find a place to park. The other area is brick town. The other area is midtown. All these areas that need, you know, trying to be revitalized. The issue is parking, is what do we do about that? Your neighborhood, Janice, is going to be flooded, because if we don't... We keep adding to the picture, Nick. I mean, we keep... Here's another one, and another one, and another one.
That's my whole point. That's the irony of this. We take a little postage stamp deal and approve it that has no parking. Here, this guy's got a half a block to work with, this low-intensity uses, and we're going to slam-bunk him.
Well, but this is the other issue. And the issue is the line of demarcation. And I think that that's where your motion is really coming from, is that from south of 41st Street, leave it alone. North of 41st Street, go for it. You've got an office. You can do an office in... I mean, that's zone O2. It's not like a non-commercial thing. There's an office used for this place. But to have a restaurant without alcohol permitted, you know, and seven, eight spaces of parking, I don't know if that complies with whatever it is or... You know, I don't know. But I think it's the line of demarcation that, at least for the current purpose, until this whole issue is about parking and what happens to that corridor on Western, until somebody puts together a plan. That's what we don't have. We do piecemeal. We do this, that, and the other. So, that's the reason for my seconding Janice's motion.
Any further discussion? If not, a vote in favor is for denial. Cast your votes. It is denied. Six to three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 13, PUD 1461. Application by Dwight H. Butler to rezone 8225 Southwest 15th Street from the R1 Single Family Residential and Scenic River Overlay District to PUD 1461 District in Ward 3.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Dwight Butler with Anchor Engineering, represent the applicant on this item.
I have read the technical reports and do agree with the TEs. I would like, however, to point out one slight possible error that I've discovered in the wording, and that is in my landscaping regulation, Section 9.2, where I'd agreed to a 20-foot landscape buffer along the west side between ourselves and the residential to the west. But I'm putting a grass swale along there, so I need south of the building limit line to be able to get my grass swale to the east of the tree buffer. So, I added wordage that the healthy, existing healthy, mature trees north of the building limit line shall be protected. That that was... The intent of that was for inside my 20-foot tree landscape buffer, the existing trees north of the building limit line would be protected. I just wanted to clarify that before anybody voted on anything.
What's that mean in English?
That there will be a 20-foot tree buffer along the west property line. We are not protecting the rest of the trees on the property, other than up in the Scenic River Overlay. I mean, obviously, we need to clear some...
Up toward the river, you have to.
Yes, sir. But we are leaving the river and the flood zone alone. We don't intend on touching it.
So, where we see the FEMA line on the graph, that tree cover has to be protected, even though you've not shown that to be full of trees?
It is protected. I've already gotten with the Corps of Engineers to get the blessing on the pond and let them know that we are not touching the river in any way, shape, or form, and have their blessing.
Okay. I understand. Commissioners?
I have a question for Dwight.
Yes, sir.
Dwight, in this photograph here?
Yes.
This is an example of the elevation materials and things?
Yes, sir. The... I'm sorry.
Is this an existing building on the site now?
It is not on the site. I got with the proposed developer or the client on this, and I said, "What kind of building are you going to put there?" And he said, "Dwight, I have the exact building that I want to build." He said, "I'll send you a picture." He said, "This is what I'm going to build for my first building," which also has his office in it. Now, the remaining buildings won't have the brick front, because they won't have an office. They're just going to be storage. But any building that fronts on 15th will have a brick facade on the side that fronts 15th.
That's why I was bringing up that... This portion, the top portion, this metal building that's behind the office space?
Yes, sir.
The front part of that building still faces 15th, but it's not brick. If he do that, I'd like to see if it's not bricks and some other material other than the metal facing 15th Street, if he takes this approach to it.
We can agree to that, since we are going to... Anything that faces 15th Street will in fact have a brick facade. So, yes, I thank you for pointing that out. We will correct that.
And are there other buildings on the site now? It looked like some other buildings are on the site now.
It's residential right now, Mr. Williams.
Are they going demolition or all that?
Yes. Yes, indeed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, Dwight, I have a couple of questions. One is, obviously, this corridor is industrial in nature.
Yes, sir.
But there is residential bordering this property.
Yes, sir.
I mean, literally. I don't know which came first. I mean, it's older residential, but it's a very nice place. But I'm not sure if it was residential before that was zoned industrial or not. I don't know. But I have a concern about what we're putting next to them, because they have a very nice place. It's right along the river. And that whole corridor's been drastically improved in the last five years, okay? And we have some very nice industrial development that's taken place.
Yes.
Along 15th there. We've had some businesses that have greatly upgraded the appearance of their facilities. And I'll be honest with you, I don't... What your picture here doesn't excite me at all. I think that's not what I want to see along 15th Street.
We did look at the surrounding buildings.
Oh, I understand. There's some that have been there for a while, but then there are some newer buildings that are much nicer, much nicer facilities, and some that have even been upgraded and improved directly across the street from this almost. You know, I certainly would not... This would not be something that I would want to see there. I don't know what your ideas are, you know, beyond that, if there's some way of making this a nicer-looking facility. I mean, it's going to be right next to residential. It's right across the street from some very nice facilities that have been built recently. I understand it's industrial, zoned industrial, or this area is industrial in nature, you know, but this corridor is developing into a... It's a nice area. Even though it's industrial, it's a nice-looking area, and I think we want to protect that. So, I'd like to see a little effort put into making this a nicer-looking facility.
And Mr. Erwin, I honestly thought we had by putting the brick office on the front and the brick facade.
Yeah, and that looks like about every other industrial area, or some of the other industrial areas that I drive through in the city that...
As you drive up to this site, you see plain metal buildings. We were doing better than the surrounding buildings.
Okay. Well, that's... I'm not that thrilled about it. That's my opinion. I haven't talked to you before today, so obviously...
I did leave a message.
I think if I lived next door to this, I wouldn't be happy to look out my window and see that.
That's why we have the landscape buffer between the residential and the subject site.
Dwight, is there a pond there?
There is now.
Are there two ponds?
There is a pond there at this time, but it will go away.
Well...
I've already got the blessing from the Corps of Engineers on that as well.
Okay.
Dwight, let's go back to the 20-foot centers on the landscape buffer.
Yes, sir.
On the west. I guess you're talking about on the west. That's how I interpret it.
They're not 20-foot centers. It's a 20-foot wide landscape.
Well, it's 20-foot wide, but what's the buffer? I'm seeing this 20-foot green belt, but I'm saying, how is it going to... How is this going to buffer the area to the west from these large industrial buildings? And I think that's probably where Commissioner Irwin's coming from. This thing appears to need some tweaking. I just can't envision this 20-foot green belt. I don't know what's going to be on that green belt that's going to be an effective buffer for something of this magnitude.
Well, we could mix and match evergreen with deciduous.
Well, I look over them unless they're awfully tall. That's what I'm saying.
And that was the reason we stipulated that the mature trees in that buffer zone would be left, for the height.
Well, yeah. And I haven't gone out there and counted mature trees, but just looking at the aerial, it looks like most of your mature trees are back down in the south side in the floodplain. And when I looked at the rendering, I didn't see a lot of landscaping along that west side.
But as in the master development plan, sir?
Well, here I see five trees on the corner and then blank.
I'm showing trees the whole way.
I'm sorry. I like to have north going up, and north is going up.
It's the heat, Mr. Gales. The heat is doing it to all of us, yes.
It's that little arrow with the N on it, Dwight.
Yes, sir. But our intent was to buffer as effectively as possible from the residential.
Although, if you hold it right side up or upside down, as you get closer to the residential, you don't see, even in this picture, a lot of trees along.
Well, that was my point.
I mean, 20 feet or not. I mean, 20 feet isn't much in the landscape buffer.
Well, I'm still trying to figure out how if we had 20-foot, and I know it's 20-foot green belt, but also if we had 20-foot centers, how this is going to really be an effective buffer. And yet, I'm not necessarily opposed to this use. I'm wondering if you went back and tweaked it along the lines of what Commissioner Irwin was suggesting. It might be better.
Dwight?
Yes, sir.
The trees that exist in this area now, inside the FEMA 100-year floodplain line, you're not taking any of those outright?
No, we don't want to cross that line.
Okay, even though you're showing... You're not showing all the trees in your...
Oh, well, I did not do an onsite topographic survey to accurately shoot all the trees and didn't want to misrepresent. No, we intend to leave the Scenic River Overlay in the floodzone district natural.
Well, I don't want to carry this on for a long time, but it sounds like maybe you want to talk to Mr. Irwin.
I wouldn't mind spending some time with you, looking at kind of your future. You mentioned other buildings.
Yes, sir.
And I'm not sure where those will go. I mean, there's not... I don't see that indicated on here.
He didn't have an idea of it. I know it works on anybody who buys this property from the... Or from approval.
Well, what I'm going to suggest is either two or four weeks, whatever suits the two of you. Take a continuance and kind of come to some agreement, and we just get it to sail through.
Time is of the essence. If two weeks would be enough for you, Mr. Irwin, I'd be happy to meet with you at any time.
Can we get... We're going to go two weeks?
Yes, sir.
Spend a little time talking about this.
Yes, I would like everybody to feel comfortable with this going forward.
I'm fine with that.
Make a motion?
Make a motion that we continue this.
Second.
To the next meeting. I don't know what the date is on that.
23rd of August, I think.
August 23rd.
Is that right?
That's right.
Okay, we'll motion to continue item 13 to the 23rd of August. Cast your votes. Thank you, Dwight, for working with us.
Item number 14, application to rezone 13600 North Mustang Road from AA Agricultural District to the R1 Single Family Residential District in Ward 1.
Hi, Mr. Scott.
Hello. Jerry Scott, Northwest Oklahoma City, 11250 Greenwood Drive.
I'm going to ask the staff, since you've got items 14 and 15 as companion items, to tell us what are the differences between the two? What are we looking at? I mean, we've got straight zoning, and we've got a spread which is close to straight zoning.
So, the first application is just straight R1 zoning. The PUD is R1 zoning with lot sizes limited, has extra landscaping, has building appearance controls, and something else. Basically, it's just R1 landscaping with a few added extras.
Including lot sizes and...
Including a minimum on the lot sizes, 8,000 feet.
So, Jerry, why are we looking at both of them? Why wasn't 14 withdrawn in favor of 15?
The applicant asked to have a vote on each application.
Oh, okay.
We've been trying to get the traditional zoning.
Well, we've been strongly encouraging you all along to get away from that R1 zoning. That's why I asked that.
I believe the concern was the lot size of 6,000 feet. If I was to sell the property, we raised it to 8,000 and put that in the PDU.
Okay. So, you're giving us an either-or opportunity here?
Yes.
Thank you.
Take item 14 first. Take them in order.
Well, items and deny 14. Go ahead.
Make a motion that we deny item 14.
Second. Is there any further discussion, Commissioners? There's a motion and a second to deny item 14. Cast your votes. Take... Hensley's not here. He's recused. So, it's... 14 is denied. 15?
Item 15 appears to be...
Well, Susan needs to read it into the records so that...
I'm sorry. Go ahead, Susan.
Item 15 is PUD 1464, application to rezone 13600 North Mustang Road from the AA Agricultural District to the PUD 1464 District, Ward 1.
Now, Mr. Chairman, item 15 pretty much appears to be what we've asked the applicant to do, come back with a PUD, and it appears he's done so.
I have one comment, and it actually appeared in both cases. Commissioner Gales? In the traffic discussion, traffic management recommends that a subsequent study based on actual development plan be provided with a preliminary plat. I'd like to suggest we make that a TE.
And I assume you don't have a problem with that.
I'm not sure if that is, but the final plat, it's okay.
I move approval of the application, adding the TE that talks about the traffic.
Subsequent study based on actual development plans when they come in.
Yes.
There has been a traffic study.
Right. But that doesn't reflect what's going to actually happen there. It reflected just sort of an assumed case.
Yes.
And so, there would just be a request that it be updated at such time as the preliminary plat comes to us.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve of item 15, adding a TE, calling for preliminary... Excuse me. A supplemental...
Traffic study.
Traffic study at the preliminary plat stage. Tongue-twistered for me today. I'm sorry. Cast your votes, and that is approved. Thank you, Mr. Scott, for working with us.
Item 16, PUD 1467, application by ERC Land Development Group to rezone 12209 Southwestern Avenue from the PUD 1016 District to PUD 1467 District in Ward 5.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. Also with me is Rob Coleman, and Rob Sharp, and Lindsay Suttle. This is an application for a multifamily development off of Western. It's just north of Westmore High School, and it's just south of 119th Street. I'm going to let Rob and Rob get up here and explain in greater detail their vision for this project and the different types of materials that are going to be used and why they feel that this property is appropriate. I want to... I want to address a couple things before I let them talk. One is the staff report. There was an unfavorable condition listed that the spud or pud would allow for 100% EFS. We don't want any EFS. We're willing to stipulate to that. And what we're going to have is either brick or hardy board, and I'll let them explain. But what you'll see is, if a building's brick, it'll be 100% brick. If it's hardy board, it'll be 100% hardy board. So we're willing to stipulate that there will be no EFS. TEs number 1, 3, and 4, we are in agreement with. And number 5 asks us to reduce the height to R4. We would like the height that we've requested, and I'm going to let them explain why. They have a unique project here that incorporates a lot of elements that you don't typically see in multifamily development in Oklahoma City. And because of that, we need the height, and we have some unique features at play with, as you can see on the site plan on your screen, we have significant buffering to the west and also to the north, with some natural tree vegetation that we've actually divided into two tracks, and we'll keep track 2 as a buffer. So with that, I'll let Rob Coleman get up here and speak, and if you have any questions, let me know. Thank you.
David said, my name is Rob Coleman. 8811 Lakeside Way, Fort Smith, Arkansas. I used to be in Oklahoma about two years ago and moved home with our family's company. But I am here representing a third-generation real estate company under the name of ERC Land Development Group. This project that we're bringing to you is part of our core business, which is the development of multifamily neighborhoods. We've developed several projects throughout the metro over the last 20 years, and this one probably has been our first since about 2008. The name of the development is called The Traditions at Westmore. I want to tell you real quick, I'm going to look what we have. Here's a colored aerial site plan to give you some scale of the development. Below here is our site plan, which you can see on the screen, and here again is going to be a view. So that's what you're seeing in this board here. With this application, we have already got all of our color palettes selected and be more than happy to share those with you. Rob Sharp, part of our design team, is here. From the brick to the hardy board to the design details, the trim details, those are already finished. So we have identified each of those. Two things that I want to point out before I let Rob speak. One is, if you look at the design of the buildings, we've eliminated all exterior staircases. And if you notice, a lot of the times on a multifamily building, one of the biggest things you see sticking out the front is either a breezeway or a staircase. So in our design, we've decided to focus more on an outdoor living space or a balcony. And if it's a two-story building, like you see here, the resident in the second floor has, right there, direct access into their unit. So as soon as they open the door, they close the door, they're inside. One of the reasons we decided to move to this new design is because weather affects us, and a lot of the breezeways, when we used to build them, were trying to wind tunnels. And so if you have your groceries or kids or anything else, you're trying to get in the house quickly and trying to get your keys out, that can become cumbersome. So that's one of the reasons we did that. As you notice, and Rob will speak to this in just a few minutes, each building has its own type. And the other reason we did that is because we've noticed that if you call someone at the apartment community and say, "Where do you live?" "Well, I live in Building 18." Well, where's Building 18? Usually the sign's about this big and says 18 on it, and you spend your time looking through the community. The reason for doing this was is the identification. So if someone drove in and then you could say, "Hey, I live in the red building on the left," and you come in. And what we're hoping is, in designing a community like this, and Rob will speak to it, is that people begin to sort of have ownership of where they live. It's not just a barracks-style development. It's more unique in each building. We have six building types that will be designed, or building on this site. And so we want to break up that repetition that you do see by changing the color palettes. I do, I did bring Rob, who's part of our design team. I'd like for him to go and speak to the rest of our design.
My name is Rob Sharp. I live at 3, 4th Street in Fayetteville, Arkansas. When we started this project, Rob's commission to me was, make it as much like a residential neighborhood as possible. And so that's why we went down this road, of having a variety of building pitches. We have a variety of building types. We have six separate building types plus a unique clubhouse. We also have six different color schemes, and so no two buildings will be the same. He also said that he wanted a traditional, classical look. He felt that that had the longest shelf life, if you will. You know, that's the kind of building that holds its value year after year after year. Sometimes things that are cutting-edge now fall out of favor, and then they become dated, and they sort of start that downhill slide. And so we really wanted something that was going to be consistently valuable throughout time, and he said he wanted to be authentic. And so what we did is we looked at a lot of different precedences of different historic buildings, and we found that sort of the ones that appealed us the most were these sort of Greek Revival, Italianate, Federal-style houses and buildings. And we found that consistently they were all of one material. They were either brick, or they were siding. And so we wanted to continue that theme. We didn't want to sort of mix and match. And so we tried to be very consistent about the porches, about the entablature, about the ornamental details, and be very straightforward with all that. And we, you know, picked buildings we liked, and we tried to match them as closely as possible in terms of proportion, material, color. And so that's rendered what you see here. And I think that you can, I think you can see the general approach we're looking for. The other thing that was really important to us was to create meaningful outdoor spaces. A lot of times with apartments, you've got parking and buildings, and there's not much space left over. And we really wanted to work hard to create a park within the project. We wanted to, we had that buffer strip along the north and east. This is probably the best example of this area. We're calling Lawnview Park, where the buildings define this space, and that'll be a great social gathering place. You can have a picnic, or throw a football, or it's the kind of place that you can, if you live in this neighborhood, you'll know your neighbors and have opportunities to socialize. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I think maybe we ought to have somebody before they get too far gone to address the building materials issue, because I think that's one that we really want to hear about. So whichever of you is going to talk about that, I'd like to hear that.
The short answer is, the, looking at the historic precedents, we looked at, they all were a consistent building, consistent material type, rather than a lot of, I think the staff report mentioned maybe 70% one material and 30% the other material. It, we, our preference is to be able to match the historic buildings and commit to one material for each building. And we firmly believe that we can create a very high-quality, durable building out of either hardy panel siding, which is a cementitious siding, or brick. Those are the materials we're offering. We're not doing any stucco or fake stone or anything like that. No vinyl, no textured plywood. So we've got two high-quality materials, and those are the ones that we're committed to.
And of the number of, how many buildings are you building?
There'll be 16 buildings.
16 buildings. And of that, what's the breakdown of brick versus hardy board, or are we going to get eight-brick building and 15-harder boards?
Right. There'll be four, there'll be four all-brick buildings, and the rest will be hardy board, and we'll show you.
Site plan, and we sort of did strategic analysis, the brick buildings have to have an easier, 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 and you're sort of in. So the people who are buying on Western Avenue are looking at the school, the ones who do the edges should be brick building, and then the ones that are more interior are the ones that need more hardy plank buildings.
Which frankly leads me to a conclusion that I've had with reviewing some older apartment structures, is the fronts still look good. Like, you get past that first building, everything doesn't look so good. Just in, some of them, I mean, a lot of them, you see. So how do we kind of ameliorate that impact or that effect? Because that's, it is a concern for the, we're not criticizing your structure, I'm more concerned about what your area looks like 10 years from now versus two years from now, because they all look really nice then. But what happens is, we get a gravitation past that, and still some of the more rundown apartment complexes that we see in Oklahoma City have still a fairly decent curb look. And back behind that, it's not so, it's not so good. So how do we avoid that?
If you could talk into the microphone now, we can, this gets recorded.
Okay, sure. The hardy plank, we've been using it for 15 years. It's got a great record. It's a very durable material. It holds up well in the wind, which is important here. And so it will be, it's not something like some of those apartments you're talking about, they're often vinyl, or there's some really masonized, something really cheap. And so the type of, we're not talking about, you know, we're going to, the buildings on the edge are going to be nice, and the ones on the inside are going to be not so nice. We think that the, in my opinion, the hardy plank building's going to be some of the more handsome ones, because they have, you can do more things with color. When you do all-brick, our concern is it's going to look like sort of public housing. A lot of times I always say that all-public housing, a lot of that red brick, and it has a monotonous look, and it's very, very, very durable, but it's a little bit tedious.
Now, do you operate, or do you just develop?
I'll let Rob explain.
We develop all of our own properties, and we hire a third-party manager to manage them. And then we have an asset management staff within our office that oversees just our units all the times. So we get our monthly reports, we look at everything, so it's not that we go out, let them go, and let somebody else manage them. The other point that I want to make to you on the design and the materials is this. Vinyl, as you know, with hailstorms, takes some brutal hits. And some of the insurance companies will take and look at the side of a building and, oh, you only had this much damage, so we're only going to let you replace these pieces of siding. Or the sun fades half a building and not all of it. And so what happens is, you tend to replace or see replaced patches in buildings. With these, we can sort of move with the test of time. If the color isn't right, if the color isn't there, this allows us to adjust a little bit. And I think I like to think of it as a single-family neighborhood. You wouldn't want every single-family building looking the same. You want that variety and sort of that curb appeal, and I think that's what our ultimate goal is, is to not end up showing you the same house after house after house after house that you would see in a neighborhood, you know, potentially in the neighborhood.
Your business model, though, is build, hold, manage?
Yes, sir.
You don't just build them and flip them, is really one of the questions?
You're correct.
Okay, James? A hardy board is, let me ask you a question, then you can ask. How durable is hardy board, and is it brittle, or what are the pros and cons of hardy board?
Well, basically, the pros of hardy board is really a cement board. And one of the good things about it is that it holds paint for eight to 10 years. And I've used it on projects, and this, 10 years ago, and it's still, it's holding the paint. It's easy to repair. The critical thing with hardy board is the insulation. If it's fractured during insulation, but a lot of installers now installing it to the factory manufacturer's specifications. So it's a real durable product, and it holds the paint, and it looks good.
Okay.
One question I had, kind of to the architectural thing further, is you asked for a variance on the R4 height restriction. I'm not sure that I am clear on that. The R4 height maximum is what, JJ?
It starts at two stories from a certain distance from the property line, and it stair steps up, as you said, further back.
Right. So what do you, what's the, what's the request? What's the spread? Obviously, you've got an idea that it's more than what we allow. I'm just curious as to how that breaks down.
It looks on our drawings that our, my eyes are right, it looks like the highest point of the peak of the tallest building we have is 42 feet tall, and it's very far away from any side property line. So is there, what is the, what is the maximum? I apologize for not...
And Mr. Hensley, part of the reason that we, why we want the variance, if you, Cindy, do you mind going back to the site plan, the first one you had up? You know, typically, we want to restrict the height because of neighboring uses and being able to see down. And here, we have a significant green space, and so that fear, as you can see, all along the west and coming back up to the north, and then there's actually a drainage easement on the north of our property line. So those fears are in play here. And I would like to add one comment. On section 9.4 in our pud, we state that we will screen to the south and to the east. We'd like to modify that. We don't want to screen to the south, and the reason is, we anticipate several of the residents here having children that go to that school. And what we'll do is screen with landscaping, but allow any children that attend that school that live in the complex the ability to walk to and from the school. Because immediately to the south, we border the Westmore baseball fields and, I think, some general athletic field. So we'd like to screen with landscaping, not your traditional hard fence that wouldn't allow access back and forth.
Do you need some pedestrian access?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, yes, not cars.
Well, I mean, I don't, all you need is pedestrian access. I'm not sure why you need a relief from the request to screen that side completely. I'm just curious. It seems like if you need a 10-foot walkway, you need a 10-foot walkway, not necessarily the whole unscreened site there. Am I missing something?
We just wanted to be clear with what our intentions are, so when we go to the building permit phase, they don't make us go out there and put a big barricade blocking our site from the school site.
Well, I think then it should read something that you should screen the west, I guess that's the south side? The south side, with the exception of your pedestrian walkway.
Sure, and we'd prefer to have a landscape screen rather than a big fence.
I think it's permitted.
Nothing prevents that.
That's a good business.
Yeah. And I, like I said, the way this is worded, I just wanted our intentions to be clear with the planning commission. That all goes into their vision of this not being your typical apartment complex, but it's more of a family residence type of place that people are proud to live in.
Now, how many acres are in track one?
Just over 10.
10?
Yes, sir. 10.24.
The property that's, okay, so you're, you're going to have on your west side, I understand the drainage disc that runs along the north and the east there. But then on the, the property that's directly south in the notch cut out there, it's zoned AA now? How big are your buildings planned on that side? Going back to your point about height and overview later, because I don't, I see that later developing as something different than it being AA right now. So what's your step up, I guess, for your height restrictions to the property that might be affected by your taller structures? Isn't that right? Yeah, right here. This is, these are all the practices? I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Two-story here, right at the notch, and then at the notch.
Right?
One-story or less against the property line, you're set up three here.
I had one protest about that.
Two-story, two-story here. This is school, school and church, you need the whole church here, and schools up here.
This is one where staff did recommend approval, and it did have the unfavorable, but like I said, we're willing to take out the EFS, which was the only unfavorable. So we would ask for your support.
Well, I'd like to speak just to the hardy siding. After two rounds of severe hailstorms, probably the most severe in 2010, and then one just a couple months ago, and seeing the damage in Nichols Hills on half-million-dollar, million-dollar-plus homes that don't have hardy siding, hardy plank, whatever, that have a traditional either vinyl siding, or masonite siding, or just cedar siding, and metal siding, that's exactly right. I mean, we're seeing 95 to 100% of that replaced, or repainted, or filled, or, and so, you know, my concern is not that. I mean, I haven't used that product...
I mean, I, having used that product, you know, since, I don't know when it came out, and I'm going to say 96, 98, you know, that's a product that I'm familiar with, we use quite a bit, holds paint well. A lot of paint now is self-priming, one or two coats. And I mean, so I really have no concern about that. To be entirely honest, the project really excites me because this is something that South Oklahoma City is going to be very proud of. As the planning commissioner for this ward, I am just excited to see this. What I'm not excited about is the potential for traffic, but I don't know that that's something that, you know, that's an issue that I, we have, you know, any control over necessarily. The project in itself, as it's contained, you know, I mean, where it's out on Meridian and 134th, we wouldn't have a traffic issue. I mean, but for where it is in the, you know, one of the highest income zip codes in the state of Oklahoma, 73170, I mean, this is, this is what I would expect. I said to David, if this was what I lovingly refer to, to Brian Coon, as the travesty on Western, which is 89th and Southwestern on the southwest corner, we would not be here right now. Because our meeting that we had, I would have discouraged that tremendously. But with the product that they brought, with the track record that I've seen, I mean, again, my sole concern is, is traffic, nothing else. The, this property, these apartments sit 250 feet west of Western. There's R4 on the north side, which is not consistent with what we would call R4, they're duplexes. They probably could have been zoned something different. There's a restaurant, a convenience store, the O'Reilly's or, I mean, there's, I don't know, I'm just, the questions that I had for David have been answered, why that this little chunk on the north was withheld. And obviously, if that's a drainage easement, is that correct, David?
Yes.
And the property on the front, this little rectangular spot right here on the front of it to the south of the entry, I mean, I figure that's going to, that's going to appropriately develop commercial because there's office and, you know, there's no residential until you get to Westmore on the east side of the street, which are apartments. Where I'd choose apartment dwellings, these would be it because my kids wouldn't have to cross Western to walk to school. So I don't, there's just a lot of amenities about this, there's a lot of positives about this, the natural vegetation that they're going to be able to leave, the buffer to the, to the south to the school. There's a lot of positives about this that I, I have not seen in other apartment applications. And again, my one and sole concern is what probably the students and parents of those students that go to Westmore would just be the traffic getting out of this. You know, it'd be awesome if there'd be a traffic light here, but I, you know, if it doesn't warrant it, I mean, that's, that's, that has to be in the hands of somebody else in the, in the traffic department. As far as the plan, as the Ward five planning commissioner, I'm in favor of it, so.
Todd, it is curious to me that there's no comment from traffic here at all in this.
Well, and our discussion was, you know, nine months out of the year, twice a day, this is probably an issue. At 8 o'clock in the morning and at 3 o'clock in the afternoon, or wherever that is. Right now, and I don't mean that it's not an issue, but right now, when school's out, I travel this frequently. I don't live on Western, but I do travel this. So, you know, those areas, that concerns me of, you know, of the getting out here and things like that, but that's a, to me, that's a traffic. David?
And Lindsay Suttle with Crafton Toll is here. A traffic study was done, and so I'll, I'll let her speak to what that found.
Yeah, I didn't see any mention of it in the staff report or any comment from our traffic people at all. Lindsay, if you give us your name and address, please.
Lindsay Suttle with Crafton Toll. Traffic study was performed on this site with the proposed conditions and no additional improvements were warranted from it.
That's straightforward and brief? Thank you. All traffic reports should be that brief, if not.
David, how many, what's the total number of dwellings?
Around 160 units.
Okay. I mean, if this were a 10.2 acre, is that what this is? Did you say 10.24?
Yes, 10.24.
If this was R1, if this was residential and it was small lots, I mean, I'm just, I mean, how could, could we get 80 or 100 houses in here, you know? I mean, I don't know, I'm just, you know, so.
With this particular site, you would get more the way we measure density because you have all the undevelopable land over there that would go into that calculation. So yeah, you could pack a single family in here. I'm, I don't see anything wrong with this happening.
I don't either.
Yeah, so, sorry. Okay, are we, David, did we decide, are we changing? The, well, the TE2, we need to do something with that. Because I'm not opposed, personally, I'm not opposed to the buildings being 100% Hardy board painted.
Or brick.
Or 100% brick. I mean.
What we'd like to do is just amend TE2 to reflect, the buildings will either be brick or Hardy board. And if it's brick, it's 100% brick. If it's Hardy board, it's 100% Hardy board with no EFIS.
And there's a, be a minimum of four brick buildings, is that what he said?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask JJ a question just because it's, it is in the staff report and there was a comment about cement board or Hardy board. Do you have a concern about that?
No. It's just been your planning commission's standard language that we put in there. And if they wanted something different, they needed to come explain that today.
I knew it would come back on us.
But also, also, I think that there's a defined term in TE number five. When you, you know, we're going to delete that, that it's not going to conform with the R4 district regulations, but there should be a statement in there, they shall not exceed X number of feet.
42.
Is it?
42 feet is what I understood.
I believe that's already in the PUD as a maximum.
It's in the PUD.
The reason being is that you could put a skyrock, you know.
It's limited, though, by PUD language, PUD language already, it's in there.
That 42 feet?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, what we'd prefer is just delete TE5 so that the PUD would control.
So I'll make a motion to approve modifying TE2 with the language about the 100% brick or 100% Hardy board, minimum of four 100% brick buildings and deleting TE5.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve item 16 as condition. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Nick, you didn't vote? You didn't, Mr. Lee? Thank you.
Item number 17 and 8, item number 17 and 18 were deferred. So item number 19, SPOD 677, application by Chesapeake Land Development Company to rezone 502 Northwest 57th Street from the R1 Single Family Residential District and C3 Community Commercial District to SPOD 677 Simplified Planned Unit Development District in Ward 2.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson with Johnson Associates. It's here with me also is what I call capital B, which would be Dennis Box, on behalf of Chesapeake. This is a little infill piece of property. When we did the original PUD 1426, they did not control the R1 tract or the C3 tract. It was under contract, but it hadn't closed. So as you can see, there's two R1 lots and the other portion of the tract is zoned C3 just like the portion to the south that MidFirst Bank owns. So our proposal here in this SPOD is we're using the same uses and language that's in the PUD 1426 to create a homogeneous zoning over the area. It's simply put, it's going to be used as a boat storage building that'll be architecturally tied into the building that will be built or we'll call Building 28 around the detention pond that's under construction right now. It is just south and east of the 500-foot diameter concrete detention pond that's going to be built.
You said boat storage?
Boat storage. There's, they're going to have canoes and, and boats to be used on this big detention pond. So, yeah, it's huge.
This is additional rowing training?
They'd have to learn how to row in circles instead of. We do agree with the staff's comments about signage. We will not need any additional signage.
Okay. I have a question, Tim. In PUD 1426, did we approve, are those all C3 zone on the PUD 1426?
No, I believe it's O2.
And I think this is my question, you have every use that C3 allows for boat storage. Why?
Because we might need, you know, to have a restaurant next to the boat storage.
And a lot of other staff, too.
I'm just teasing. Well, we did include every commercial use that was permitted in, in 1426 just to be con, just to be consistent.
To clarify that, this is just coming in conformity with 1426.
Correct.
And the other point I'd make on this particular site, I dare you to go drive up to it right now. The best way to get there is probably by train.
Don't know if, you know, things do happen.
Well, but I guess my point, Bob, is.
Jenny, if you want to make a motion.
I do, I do. You just have to close your eyes and vote on this one. You can't get to the site. I actually drove up through there and decided the giant limbing crane was just a little too threatening for me, so. But I'm going to move for approval. This is just in conformity with what we've already done in that area, so.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 19. Cast your votes and it's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, the next three items were deferred. So we're at item number 23, it's a resolution determining the proposed first amendment to the amended and reissued Central Business District Urban Renewal Plan to be in conformance with the comprehensive master plan of the city of Oklahoma City as amended and recommending its approval to the city council.
Hi, Dan.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm here on the urban renewal plans.
Sir?
I'm here, here on the urban renewal plans. Dan Brennitz, City Attorney's Office. Any questions? The, the primary purpose for these is to add, in the first one, in number 23, the amendment to the downtown central business district plan is to authorize the acquisition of the Santa Fe Railway Station.
I'm going to suggest that both of these items be continued. City council, a couple of weeks ago, decided that they were going to hire a consultant to take a look again at what they're doing along the Boulevard, particularly where they were going to bring it down. I see the Boulevard with an upcoming public discussion next Monday and HoDOT discussion a couple of weeks after that. The Boulevard, the Convention Center, Court of Shore being integrally connected with one another. Even this intermodal train site will be impacted by how we wind up with the final design for the Boulevard. And as a Court of Shore member, I'm concerned too about exactly what we get in the way of a Convention Center because if that is not really very carefully done, my opinion based on my experience on the Court of Shore Committee is that the park doesn't develop or certainly won't become what was planned at one time. And I think with the public discussion going on right now, the council discussion going on right now, that these items can be deferred four weeks, six weeks, whatever, until there's some real clarity on what we're going to do.
Mr. Yocel, I don't think any, either of these projects are affected by, will affect the downtown Boulevard. The one that's probably the most important is the amendment to the Court of Shore plan so that we could go ahead and start the process of acquiring the property for the Convention Center and possibly the Convention Hotel. We are in a position where we're ready to move forward on that and we need to start making those negotiations and find out if we're going to be able to acquire that and if not, proceed with condemnation. And we need to do that in fairly short order.
Dan, in that regard, on 24, and, and pardon me for not knowing all the parcels, but it appeared to me that 24 was addressing a greater area than just what we are perceiving to be the convention site and the adjacent hotel. Is that correct?
Since we're not really sure exactly where the location is, it is, it's also projected to be used for parking for the Convention Center and the hotel, so it's.
I guess that's what I'm finding troublesome. I didn't have a problem with 23, but when I looked at 24, this looks like a blind land grab to me without any direction of knowing where I'm going. I may be reading that wrong, but when I went through it, I'm saying, we're just putting our arms around all the dirt we can and we'll figure it out later.
Let me add to that.
That didn't leave me with a warm fuzzy feeling.
Well, but I, and I think that probably both 23 and 24 need to be deferred, although I'm less concerned about 23, but this whole issue. The only information that I had was on this, on the location of the Convention Center or what's going on. We had two, two, two experiences. One, you remember the property owner on Second Street or whatever it is, he said, wait a minute, you're closing off my street, what are you doing? Nobody knew what was going to go there, who was going to do what. Secondly, we were at, had that Urban Development Committee meeting and the presenter, or maybe it was a CIP, one of the bond thing, the presenter was saying, here's where we're, I asked the question, where's the Convention Center going to be? Well, I don't know. I mean, it was really, I don't know, and it was kind of a humorous thing, we're laughing about it. And then here we have a map that says it's going to be right there, here's the property, here's what's going to happen, as if it was already done. I'm not willing to go forward and do any kind of approval on this until, until I know, I mean, on those CIP things, we were just, you know, we just rubber stamped them before and now we have an opportunity to really have an idea of what's going on. Same thing with this. If it's our obligation to make a, a motion that reviews or, you know, approves this to go on, I need more information other than here. Take it or leave it. Now, it's not your fault, Dan, but it's just here, it's like, here it is, vote for it. I, you know, I don't know if the Convention Center should be there, should be sideways, should be in another place. Some committees are working on it, the Maps Committee, Maps Three Committee, et cetera. I'd like to hear from them why this is being done, what's happening, et cetera. That's why I can't really, I agree with, with Commissioner Yocel.
I'd like to know about the impact on things like Court of Shore, too, and we don't know that today.
Right.
There's a lot of public discussion right now. I'll give you a chance, Kathy. There's a lot of public discussion and concern about this that needs more airing and I'm reluctant, in fact unwilling to amend the plan today.
In addition to that, Mr. Chairman, we keep hearing the current buzzword across all levels, business, government, whatever, about transparency, transparency, transparency. I'm so sick and tired of hearing about transparency. And yet, this is an example of, of a whole lot of transparency. When we can't figure out our own applications and don't have the information, as Mr. Bright just pointed out, how does that come across as transparent and how does that work with the public?
Well, we've got a public that's curious right now and interested in what's going on here. The Convention Center and the Boulevard are, to me, the two most significant things that will occur after the Devon Tower downtown in the next decade or more.
I agree with that. But I'll also point out, and I don't believe it's out there any longer. But I'll also point out, and I don't believe it's out there any longer, but there used to be a banner or a sign sitting outside this chamber, with the goals of the council. The very first one was citizen trust. How do we instill trust in a citizenship when we can't figure out this and we don't have the information?
Kathy, you want to tell us who you are for the record?
Pardon me. My name is Catherine O'Connor. I'm the president for the Alliance for Economic Development of Oklahoma City and also the executive director of the Urban Renewal Authority. I apologize if you feel like the information in your packet today is incomplete, and that is entirely my fault. The selection of the site for the Convention Center was voted on by the city council in a public meeting, and the Urban Renewal Authority was asked by the city to proceed with the land acquisition for the Convention Center.
Kathy, can I stop you right there? That was my first question. When I reviewed 24, I thought I was reviewing something to acquire the land for the Convention Center and perhaps an adjacent hotel. But when I started trying to piece the parcels together, I was getting a lot more land. And it looked... My note here is, "Looks like a land grab." When I asked Dan the question, the response is, "Well, we need to have some flexibility because we don't know where everything is going to be."
The site that's been identified is the site for the Convention Center and one and a half additional blocks for a future expansion. There is a possibility that the Convention Center Hotel might be located on a portion of this property, but that has not been completely determined yet because the design of the Convention Center has not been finalized. The purpose of this item today was so that the Urban Renewal Authority could proceed forward with the acquisition process for the land as requested by the city, so...
Kathy, what's the purpose of this thing on Monday at the farmer's market, the big discussion about the Boulevard and the Convention Center, if it's already been approved?
The discussion on Monday evening is about the Boulevard, is my understanding, in particular, the west portion of the Boulevard where it begins, the proposed Boulevard, where it is proposed that it would be elevated west of Dewey, back to where it connects to the I-40 alignment. It doesn't have... It's not been communicated to me that it has anything to do with the Convention Center location.
Again, I, you know, I maybe didn't read the newspaper, but I did not know that there was... The position of the Convention Center was absolutely finally determined by council. I did not know that.
Unless I'm mistaken, it was voted on by city council as the recommended site for the Convention Center, and urban renewal was directed to proceed with the land acquisition.
Back to Cord Ashore, Kathy, you were present in all those meetings, as was I. And the land we're talking about today, at that time contemplated, there would be an open pathway on the Harvey Spine. A whole lot, to me, depends on what gets built there. I know the convention committee was presented with something that would suggest that the display places for the Convention Center would be below grade and that the at-grade or perimeters would all be active street activity. I also read that Mike Carrier is concerned there's not enough money to do all of this. We may not get it done that way. We may just get something that becomes another Cox Center box sitting there. That takes away, for me, the... Any concept of being able to have a Cord Ashore project, that just, in a practical sense to me, goes away. These things, to me, are tied together so closely, and they're so important, that I think they need more time. The public needs more information, and they're calling for more information. I mean, this meeting on Monday is not organized by the city or ODOT. It seems to me it's a grassroots kind of thing. I think people are saying they want more time, they want to know more about this. There's nothing to a four-week or six-week delay on this to let this information kind of percolate and people figure out what's going on. There are just a lot of questions, and there aren't a lot of answers. And...
I agree, there's a lot of questions, and I think a lot of those are contingent upon getting more information through the Maps 3 process. I don't know that this amendment to the urban renewal plan necessarily helps or hurts any of that.
Well, Kathy, can you...
My question is... Wait a minute. I just can't... Excuse me, Kathy. One question that I want to get, perhaps Dan's the one to answer. Assuming that we pass this resolution, and next step in the process is what? Where does the resolution go from there?
Council.
Okay.
It's already been approved by the Urban Renewal Board.
The Urban Renewal Board, then this resolution goes to council and allows for the... Includes the area for acquisition or condemnation?
Correct.
Right?
But my question, Kathy...
So that process, then, is here, us, however we deal with it, then council, and then on to... Then it's done?
Right.
And you start condemning or buying the land? And to include this area of Walker on the west, Newark on the east, Reno on the north, and the former I-40 on the south, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, thank you. And Kathy, on the process...
That's my question. This is supposed to be for the Convention Center and the adjacent land, and yet it appears to cover a whole bunch of other stuff. When I look at the Convention Center, everything's north of the... Tell me what's included here and what's not, I guess, is my question.
If you look at, I don't know, exhibit five, or any of these exhibits, I guess, it just appears that we are changing the plan for a lot more than just the Convention Center and the contiguous site.
That's my concern, is that the impact of this is much greater than this one tract or this combination of tracts.
And I don't have a problem at all with going forward with the Convention Center. I know where it's going to be and the adjacent stuff, but this just looks like a collage.
Well... We need to go a little... Let's see. There's 23. It starts at 23, 24. 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 Do you know enough about...
It's the train station.
That's the first time I've seen it.
I think that's the same thing. I've never seen it either, so why am I...
I think that's the rub that, you know, I think we need. I think that's a pretty important decision. I guess my argument on 23...
I don't think we need to be making it on the cap.
I guess my argument on 23, Jim, is I could take my staff report, study it, read it, and I figured out what 23 was, and I, you know, frankly don't have a problem with 23. As Dan said, it's the train station. It's 24 that I can't... For the life of me, there's inconsistencies there that need to be addressed.
Well, I stand by my original statement. I don't feel like I know enough about either one of them. It may be obvious to some people that this is, you know, what we need to do, but I'd like, you know, a little bit more information about it. As Jim said, this is the first time we've seen it. We haven't had any discussion about it. I don't know the details of how this is going to work with the new transportation plan, whatever that may be, or however it may be developing. I'd like to know some of that stuff before we make this.
Really, Dan, when you said it's for the transportation hub, I don't know anything about it. I know nothing about what you're talking about. Nobody's made a presentation about anything at all. And so you come up here and say, "Here's this," expecting the planning commission to just rubber-stamp it and go on. That's not our responsibility. Our responsibility is to be informed, and therefore I don't know where my motion is. I don't know what to do. I... I need to continue. 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 That's my motion. For four weeks.
Further discussion? Okay.
So you're going to leave... You're going to accept 23?
No, he's saying his motion is now continue 23.
23 and 24.
Are you ready to vote?
No.
Cast your votes. It's continued.
Thank you.
Item 24? Hmm? That was 23. Unanimous.
So that was just 23?
Yes.
Okay. Item 24 is a resolution determining the proposed first amendment to the Cord Ashore Urban Renewal Plan to be in conformance with the comprehensive master plan of the city of Oklahoma City as amended and recommending its approval to the city council.
Need to continue for four weeks.
Second. Motion is second. Any further discussion, commissioners? Cast your votes. Jimmy? Okay.
You may. You made your decision, and I certainly am not here to persuade you on that. I just want to give you just a little bit of background on this. Again, you've already made your decision, and that's well and good. The train station, there was a hub study done by ACOG in the city of Oklahoma City a while back that identified that as being a potential hub study or hub center for transportation. I don't know if that was brought to the planning commission. I don't know whether that was done. Maps 3 was going forward to purchase that, as we were... And it directed staff to go forth and do that. The hub study was approved by council, and staff was directed to go forward with that. Urban renewal was brought in for the purpose of... You know, there's a segments of that that may be private use. And if we get into a condemnation situation, we may be careful how we acquire that so we can fully use that as a symbol in the future. And so that's why urban renewal was brought in, since the city just going through the condemnation process, which is why the planning commission was brought into it. The same thing is for the Convention Center. Convention Center, through the mass, we had the study that was done by... Approved the site was approved by council last summer for that. And again, there's a hotel in there. We're not sure exactly if that hotel would be private on that site or not. As we do acquisition, we don't want to acquire it with the potential of them or domain and not having urban renewal involved with that process. And so therefore, urban renewal was brought into the loop to make sure that as we acquire that, if we do choose to put a hotel in there, it would be properly done through the condemnation process. And so that's what our attempt to do that is why the plan needed to be modified, why urban renewal was brought in, was for the potential of some type of private use of that for the Convention Center. It would be the hotel. For the train station, it could be a coffee shop or whatever is deemed appropriate to be down there for a sundry development or retail for the transportation hub. And so that's great. We'll go forward. And the mass folks are pushing us to get the land acquired. Well, that's fine. We'll take the time and hopefully provide you with all the information you need forward, and if it doesn't happen this month, next month, whatever that happens. But that's kind of a little bit of the process in the background. The meeting Monday night, I hadn't heard any discussion of changing an alignment of the Boulevard. The Boulevard is not designed, as of yet, in that central area, but I had not heard anyone talk about having it outside of the right of way that's identified there between the park and Convention Center. But, great, thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
I hope that clarified a little bit of the process and what we're trying to accomplish.
Thanks. Thanks, Jim. Communications and reports, planning commission committees? Planning commission members?
As a note, I will not be at the next meeting on the 23rd. I will be out of town.
Planning commission members?
As a note, I will not be at the next meeting on the 23rd, I will be out of town.
Neither will Mr. Bryant, neither will I.
Okay, so.
Anyone else going to be out of town next two weeks that you know of?
I'm going to be out there. Looking for bonders.
What did you say, James?
I will be out on the 23rd.
Oh.
That's four of us, then.
No variances. Sorry. Time to plan a trip, Jimmy.
I don't know. I guess you can draw cards or like straws or something to, because.
The short one wins?
It's not, as far as I know, there's.
I would just think somebody could volunteer.
Somebody could volunteer to chair the meeting? I mean, Nick has done it before. He's the only one who's not part. So if somebody else wants practice. But there will only be five of you as of the count today. If anyone else winds up not planning to come, let the staff know right away, because it means you will not have a meeting. Janice?
Are we still doing things? I, I just wanted to say, I didn't want to add any additional time while we were talking about item number eight, but I do think that, you know, we are, we are faced with a real dilemma on this issue of straight zoning versus PD and SPD that centers around principally signage, but it's not confined entirely to that. I mean, we're just going to have to, you know, confront, I think, the, the reality that, you know, straight zoning doesn't give us any control, that's it, you know, it is what it is. And if, if we don't want to, which I didn't hear the will to, do away with the whole concept of straight zoning, then, you know, we're going to have to, I think, give some serious thought to actually amending the ordinances to give us more of what we want in the, the regulations that govern straight zoning. I mean, if they don't say what we want them to say, and that, that is the, the thing over which we're continuously tripping, I mean, that case today was, was really, you know, probably a perfect one, you know, it's, as an illustration. It was, it really was the kind of, of spite where you'd say, well, this isn't appropriate for straight zoning, what would be? But at the same time, you know, it really did present very real concerns about, in this case, mostly signage. And I think we have got to, it's really come up and kind of bitten us a few times, and maybe I'm feeling it a little more than most, that this idea that, you know, this person, this applicant is saying, well, I'll do this or I'll do that, well, you know, even if we're willing to give that kind of credence, and I was perfectly willing to today, to what an individual applicant is saying, you know, legally speaking, that's not the basis on which to grant zoning, what, what this applicant will do. And an economy that goes up and down like Oklahoma City's does, I think, you know, it's certainly very, very probable that nobody's going to hold on to a single piece of property for very long, let alone forever. So even if that person completely fulfills their obligation, and we're completely satisfied with the way they have, you know, met our expectations, that's no guarantee. In fact, it's, it's no control of any kind, really. The only thing you've got is, you know, what's there in black and white. And with straight zoning, that's what's in the regs. So I think, you know, we may have to discuss amongst ourselves and think seriously about whether those regs need some bolsterings and tightening up, some heightening, whatever the right word is, so that we feel like we can get more of what we want to see and what we feel like the city needs in cases where it is appropriate to grant straight zoning.
Well, as I, as I said, when I voted against it, is that for years I have said we need to revise our sign ordinances. They're, they're antiquated, because the person that takes the land, when this guy goes away, there's a 50-foot pole sign up there with flashing lights, et cetera, et cetera, and that's really not good planning, that's not good for the city. So I say again to whomever it is that is going to redo the ordinances, we need to redo at least that, plus perhaps other things that apply to all the zoning areas, you know, that we have. That's my, I hope.
You know, and just by virtue of the fact what took place today, even though we was going for straight zoning, we still came outside of that mode and asked, would you do this, would you agree to this? And that just almost sets the precedent. That was one issue of signs, but it could be another issue, it could be the materials, it could be a lot of things, and we sat there and accepted that we didn't necessarily care for. So I think we really need to look at, what are we going to do with straight zoning? I agree with you.
Our overarching issue is community appearance and just encouraging higher quality development, attractive landscaping, better-looking signs, and so forth. And that's just the direction we've been going over time. But as I just said to Susan, Bob wasn't here for the last round on the sign ordinance, and it's bloody. And I think things are changing in the city. I mean, we're thinking more highly of ourselves as a community, certainly than when I got here years ago, and I hope that trend continues, but.
Are you suggesting that time is right to direct staff to come up with a signed draft?
I'm suggesting that we probably do a study session which talks about the, the issues that do concern us with straight, the different categories of straight zoning.
No, I'll just focus in on signage for the moment.
Well?
See, I, I think that's sort of not the way to go.
Yeah.
I think, it, I mean, I remember those wars over the signage, and I, you know, I think that's almost more than we want to take on. I would quite willingly explore the possibility that what we look at instead is, you know, here are the C-3 regs, here is what they permit as far as signage is concerned, and maybe they should be adjusted to require something that's more akin to what we want to see, period. I mean, I don't think we have to take on the whole spine ordinance to be able to make the requirements for the most common and frequently requested zoning categories to be more in keeping with what we're up here twisting people's arms to get them to voluntarily agree to do. I'm not saying don't, but I'm just saying, I'm not sure we have to go there, and that there might be a more incremental approach that we could at least explore and look at, at taking.
Well, then, let me change my question. Are we suggesting staff go back and, and review the sign regulations in the, I'll say residential office and commercial areas?
Well, let me just say this, just as a reminder of something we did a couple years ago. Remember that when we led the series of development committee meetings about appearance standards? Because that was the premise behind appearance standards, that we, you know, improved those standards for building facades, for landscaping, for signage, there were a couple other categories we had, citywide, because we deserve it citywide, not just on appearance corridors. You know, we went through, I don't know how many meetings, how many debates, we ended up with a heck of a change at the end, because no one wanted it, no one meaning the development community. And so I'm just saying, we need to be able, we as staff, need to be able to bust through that barrier, because otherwise we spent, we have so much work to do, and we spent so much time on that for so, so we need, I don't know what needs to change, because we're willing to do the work, but there just needs to be a bigger return, because we agree we need to get there.
Well, I understand, and I was here, as the chairman noted, for the bloody war. I'm not suggesting we go there. What I am suggesting is, we either get in sync with our regulations on signage, or we change them. Sitting around this horseshoe and bellyaching about the fact that C-3 allows 40-feet-tall pole signs of 200 square feet, yes, it does. And, you know, to say, okay, this guy has C-3 and he can do that sign, and the next owner can come along and take his 20-foot sign and raise it, or 25-foot sign and raise it to 40 feet, yes, he can. That's, those are the rules that we're playing by. If we don't like the rules, then we need to change them. But sitting around and complaining about them and not doing anything about it is just not very productive. We have been very successful in the PUD process with our, our signage. I'm, I've been very pleased with that. But this deal to say, because of a sign requirement in a zoning district, in this case, C-3, I'm going to disallow C-3 zoning because the, the signs are out of whack, that's not right. And we shouldn't be doing that.
I think that's absolutely correct. And if we do, if, if staff would just say, okay, we're going to do, we're going to start with signs, if you win that battle, and it's one that nobody wants to fight very hard, because everybody's really, you know, but, but I think the proof of the pudding is, like Nick said, on the PUDs that come in and have been coming in for, what, the last two years, three years, do you see, how many times do, any kind of a PUD commercial guy wants to put anything other than an eight-foot monument sign? Is they, they've agreed to it, they know that that's okay, they know, you know, I can do that because I'm going to do some nice commercial development. I think the tide has shifted to where there will be giant amounts of pushback, particularly if with a guy that has a C-3 location here, and all around him are 40-foot pole signs with flashing lights. I can't compete with that. That's the argument, and that's the difficulty of getting this thing done. But if you win that battle, then all the rest of it that we've worked on, on the commission, landscaping, architectural design, or whatever, materials, whatever, to, you know, look at the ordinances, you win the sign battle, and you've won, you've really, you've, you've really taken away all the, probably all the issues that I would have, like on straight, you know, straight rezoning, like, okay, you can do that, but there's some controls, there's some reasonable elements in the ordinance that lets straight zoning go ahead. You know, not a PUD, but just let it go with, 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 you know, with logic.
But there are some places, and JJ, do you remember how tall that sign is out at, on I-35 at Brahms? Is it 60-foot? It's a 60-foot sign. Came through the Board of Adjustment. I was adamant against, I voted against it. I went out there the other day and saw that sign in the last planning, or the last Board of Adjustment meeting, I apologized. That sign does not look like a 60-foot sign. If you recall, it's down in a valley.
Yeah.
And what Brahms have done, that's our headquarters, what they have done with that sign, it's fantastic. I mean, that's a good-looking sign. Right. But I'm saying, you know, there's, there's times that you can say a 60-foot sign is appropriate, and there's times that you say that a monument sign is appropriate. So, you know, I, I don't know that you can take a, our sign ordinance and, and massage it that much to make it fit. Maybe that's part of our job.
That's what variances are for, too, Jim, is, as you dealt with it. I mean, you did vary in, vary in, and that turned out to be the right answer. But that's what the Board of Adjustment is for.
Is there any possibility that we might have some dialogue with our counterparts on the city council concerning this matter, and get some feel for whether there is any political will to see any, I mean, I, you know, that's the thing, we can do whatever we want to do here, and we can run the staff ragged, you know, having meetings with the development community, but if it's, if it's not going to get past us, or if it does get past us and goes nowhere, it'll all have been for naught.
Well, I would encourage.
Or not even get to you, because we can't get past the development community, which is what happened.
Well, I would encourage each of you to talk to not only just your respective council person, but any of the others that you have a good communications relationship with, and share thoughts and concerns, and see what we can do to sort of anesthetize them to some of the development community pressure, because there's just a few of them that have an awful lot of time to talk to council people, and staff for that matter, and the whole rest of that community really just goes about their day-to-day business, and if you say garage setbacks are 20 feet, well, it's okay, that's what we have to do. If you talk about a particular appearance issue, oh, okay. I mean, if they go to Edmund and do something, they meet those standards. If they go somewhere else and meet a different standard, they just want to know what the standard is, and they'll go meet it. Again, within reason, I mean, but moving on, planning departments, anything?
We do have some, we'll, we'll probably need an urban development committee meeting or two in September. We have, if you remember, the, we've talked with a few of you about the PUD ordinance. If you remember that, it was several months ago, and we're going to go forward with it this summer, and we knew a lot of people were out, so we didn't. So that's what's going to be coming forward in September, as well as Bricktown ordinance, which Bob's been involved in, being on the Bricktown Committee. So those two things I know, in the near future. I also just wanted to ask, with the urban renewal stuff that we saw today, is that something you'd want to hear at a study session? You want me to see if somebody can come to a study session and have that discussion versus this meeting? Well, I mean, in four weeks.
We need to be informed.
Well, it was continued for four weeks, so.
I think we need to be informed. I would suggest, I mean, and urge that every one of us who can just go to that Boulevard meeting on Monday night, go to the ODOT meeting on August 21st. Again, three of us won't be here that week, or at least, maybe four, so we're going to miss that one. But, you know, finding out exactly what's going to happen there, what the community response is to what's being suggested, I think that's as important as the MAPS committee saying, let's go forward with X or Y. Development Services? Municipal Counselor? Motion to adjourn? We're adjourned.